Let the record show at six o'clock, a call, our meeting to order. Sarah, will you please do the roll call?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
We do have a quorum. We have a rather lengthy agenda this evening. We'll start out with the approval of the agenda, and I don't think anything's changed on that. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Whitaker, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker to approve the meeting minutes as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention due to absence.
Okay. I think I heard you. Let the record show there's one abstention by Mr. Bush due to absence. Okay, we begin our public hearings. I think we have six of them. First one is District Concrete.
There's nobody.
Nobody.
The first public hearing tonight's a request for waiver. The project is District Concrete filed 2407-203. The developer is Thomas Carter and the engineer is Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 17, Parcel 72, and is located on the west side of Winchester Avenue, approximately half a mile south of San Mason Road. The developer is proposing a concrete material storage facility on 1.10 acres to be served by public water. Sewer is not needed for that site. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section 802.1.1B.1A of the subdivision ordinance requiring a 25-foot buffer between commercial and residential use. The developer will own the adjacent residential parcel that requires the 25-foot buffer yard and screening. Screening consisting of a six-foot privacy fence and additional six-foot-high evergreen trees is proposed. Since the developer will own the adjacent residential parcel and the required screening is being provided, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 802.1.1B.1A of the subdivision ordinance.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. My name is Mark McDonald. I'm with Integrity Federal Services.
This is a public hearing. Invite you to come forward and make your comments known regarding this project.
There is no one. I move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bush. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the staff or of Mr. McDonald?
Hearing no, Madam President, I make a motion to accept staff recommendation to approve waiver to Section 802.1.1B.1A.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush to approve the waiver. Second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next public hearing is Rutherford Lane Apartments.
Yes, this public hearing is a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Rutherford Lane Apartments filed 2405-136. The developer is Trailer Holdings LLC and the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 9 and Tax Map 10, Parcels 15.1, 15.2, 15.3, and 103. The site's located on Winchester Avenue, approximately 0.55 miles south of Musselman High School. The developer is proposing six apartment buildings with 48 total units on 2.83 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the June 17, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted waivers to Section 801, Table 8-1A7, to reduce the number of parking spaces and to Section 802.1.1A3 to allow for parking to encroach into the railroad buffer. At the same meeting, the developer was denied a waiver to Section 503B, Table 5-2, to allow for a 25-foot front setback. On July 23, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, good evening. Jamie McLean with Greenway.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Invite you to come forward and make your comments known regarding this project.
There is no one. I move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. Second by Mr. Whitaker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Ms. McLean or of the staff?
There are no questions. I make a motion. We accept staff recommendations for advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to advance the project forward to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next public hearing is Exit 23 Storage.
This public hearing is a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Exit 23 Storage filed 2304-123. The developer is Exit 23 Storage LLC and the engineer is CEC Inc. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 10, Parcel 77, and is located at 8050 Williamsport Pike, approximately half a mile south of the Falling Waters Interstate 81 interchange. The developer is proposing a 15,000-square-foot self-storage facility on approximately 1.72 acres. At the May 20, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was denied a waiver to Section 802.1.1B.1A of the subdivision ordinance requiring a 25-foot buffer between commercial and residential use. On July 23, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project? Exit 23 Storage.
Good evening. My name is Mark King. I'm one of the partners in the project.
I'm sorry, your last name again?
King, K-I-N-G.
This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your questions or comments known. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding this project.
If there are none, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Whitaker, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions that you'd like to ask the applicant or the staff?
Hearing no, Madam President, I make a motion to advance the sketch plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to advance the project to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next public hearing is Cornerstone Subdivision.
Yes, this is a public hearing for requests for sketch plan advancement. The project is Cornerstone Subdivision filed 2405-131. The developer is Jeff Michael and the engineer is Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 4, Parcel 7.2, and is located at 42 Blessing Lane, approximately 150 feet off of Arden-Noville Road. The developer is proposing 10 single-family lots on approximately 22.8 acres to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 24, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Mark McDonald with Integrity Federal Services.
Again, this is a public hearing for Cornerstone Subdivision. Invite you to come forward and make your comments known regarding this project.
If there are none, I move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. McDonald or the staff?
Are no questions. I make a motion. We accept staff recommendations for advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to advance the project forward to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public hearing is Amber's Meadow.
This public hearing is a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Amber's Meadow filed 2407-193. The developer is Thomas Companies LLC and the engineer is CEC Inc. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Maps 17L and 17, Parcels 9 and 12.7. The site's located on the north side of Specs Run Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of its intersection with Winchester Avenue. The developer is proposing 48 townhouse lots on 7.59 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 25, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent Amber's Meadows?
Yep, my name is Lane Tobin from CEC.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Invite you to come forward and make your questions or comments known regarding this subdivision.
There is no one. I move to close public hearing.
The record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Okay, Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. Tobin or of the staff?
I would like to say, if it's possible, due to an update that we came up to just today and the possibility of increasing the impervious area, we wanted to do a public hearing to go ahead and address any concerns, but it would be possible to table this until the next meeting so we could get a better understanding. Because if we increase the impervious area or make any drastic design changes, we'll be right back here.
It's up to the staff. What's your recommendation?
Uh, I don't know. This is our first hearing about it. So, um, I guess table it so we can take a look at it. But, I mean, depending on what happens, they may have to do a public hearing if density increases. That, so table it with the understanding that you still have to be compliant with the ordinance.
We understand that. It's just that it came up today. We had an easement that was going forward that we were going to use for stormwater, and it kind of snowballed into something else with the possibility of purchasing more property. So instead of having to come back to you all again, we just wanted to table it till we could get a further understanding.
You didn't want to talk to the staff about that before tonight?
Well, as I said, we just found out this morning and didn't really get clear guidance until about 5:57, so.
Okay. Planning Commission members, how about you? How do you feel about this? Do you want to table it or do you want to proceed with approval and let them come back?
Would that be a major plan change now?
Well, they're not even at the point of having to do a plan change. For what it's worth, it would almost be, it'd be better to approve the sketch as is. And if it needs changes and that require a new public hearing, then we can do that. But I'd rather be closed tonight, no matter what, try to figure out what. The sketch as is right now is compliant, but if they change that sketch, we're going to have to do a new submission.
Excuse me?
No, perfect.
He said he would, his recommendation would be approve the sketch as is. And if it needs re-advertised based on.
It would have to be anyway.
Right.
If the impervious, if the impervious coverage is increasing.
And it just makes it clean.
Or, or the density is increasing, they would absolutely.
Well, it, it will make it smoother to follow through if you ever have to go back and look ahead at it.
And then if something falls through and they want to go forward with this design, then we don't have to go back anymore.
Okay. Makes sense.
Okay. Planning Commission members? Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. We advance the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and that is to advance the sketch plan through to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the last public hearing is Mountain State Pickleplex. That's a mouthful.
Yes, this is a public hearing for requests for sketch plan advancement. The project is Mountain State Pickleplex filed 2405-152. The developer is JCL Properties LLC and the engineer is JHA Companies. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 15, Parcel 24, and is located on the west side of MRB Range Drive, approximately 750 feet south of Novak Drive. The developer is proposing an 18,000-square-foot pickleball recreational facility on 6.2 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 25, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Do we have anyone to represent the project? Mountain State Pickleplex.
Chris Waddell, JHA Companies.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your comments known. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding this project.
There are no comments. I move to close public hearing.
Second.
The record show that there's no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Bush, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Waddell or the staff?
I have a question. How is parking calculated for this building and usage?
For recreational use, it's per square foot. It's on the cover sheet and it goes down through.
Yeah, just, I wonder, with this being a new phenomenon, maybe not so new anymore. I mean, what's, how many people possibly could be playing at the same time tournaments? Same as, okay.
They know their business.
Does it not interfere with any of the light path?
It's out of the RPZ. It's in the, it's in the sound, does it level?
Okay.
But that's something that we need to look at. They still got the FAA letter that's going to have to go bye-bye and FAA. They, there's, you know, we kind of look at it as like a warehouse use only. There's plenty of warehouses around that I've been found yet. Not in the correct.
Okay.
And they were take office events.
Well, that could be interesting for the soundproof and the noise from the pickleball. Okay. Any further questions? I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion. We advance the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to advance the project forward to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. It's a hot item. Okay, now we're into the preliminary plan approvals, and the first one is Fargo Properties.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Fargo Properties. The file number is 2402-049. Developer is Frank J. Fargo. The engineer is Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Map 6F, Parcel 9. This site is located north of the intersection of Jaredstown Road and Winchester Avenue. The developer is proposing a multi-use building with one 2,880-square-foot office on the first floor and three 960-square-feet apartments on the second floor. This site is 0.52 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. At the January 16, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 801, Table 8-1B8, Off-Street Parking of the subdivision ordinance 2009, to allow for 19 shared parking spaces contingent on the following. The van-accessible handicap space is sufficient only if the accessible route from that space provides proper access for both the residential and commercial use. If not, a second accessible space will be provided. And B, all residential spaces shall be labeled with pavement markings and permanent signage for residential use only. On July 29, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project was compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent Fargo Properties?
John Eisenhower with Integrity Federal Services.
What's your first name again?
John.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Eisenhower or of the staff?
Are no questions to make recommendations or make a motion to accept recommendations, approval of the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Fargo Properties. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next preliminary plan is Falling Waters Industrial Center.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Falling Waters Industrial Center, Lot 6D. The file number is 2404-093. The developer is Rental Properties Incorporated. The engineers Fox and Associates Incorporated. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Map 14, Parcel 11.16. This project is located at the end of Lansdale Court, east of Langston Boulevard, in the Falling Waters Industrial Center. The developer is proposing a 30,000-square-foot warehouse with a two-story section, which will consist of a 5,000-square-foot showroom and 5,000-square-foot office. The total site is 3.35 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. At the January 2, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was denied a waiver to Section 801 of the subdivision ordinance 2009 for a reduction from 44 parking spaces to 32 parking spaces. On July 29, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project was compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval to the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff?
There are no questions. I make a motion. We accept approval of the preliminary.
Wait, hold on just a minute. Do you have a question back there?
I have an overall plan that I'd be happy to share, if you wish.
Yeah.
Or I could speak to it now.
Yeah, go ahead. It's not a public, it's not a public hearing, but since you do have a question about the location, we will allow it.
Are you familiar with, it's US Route 11, where the Office of Panhandle Builders is, off of Langston Boulevard? Okay. That's called Reddy Rock, I believe, or something like that. Red Rock. It's, it's south of that, so continue towards Martinsburg.
More close.
Correct.
Pretty close.
This warehouse is tiny compared to warehouse you're referring to. I, Fox wasn't the engineer on Red Rock, Doug. Is that a million square feet? Eight hundred and some, almost 900,000. 30,000 all in? Is that correct? Yes. Understood. And I would add, this is really a retail appliance area, appliance store, along with a warehouse. So if you buy a washer dryer, instead of them having to ship it from Baltimore or wherever, most likely it could be here locally and delivered there. That answer your question? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sianovich.
Sure.
Okay. Planning Commission members, do you have questions?
There are no questions. I make a motion. We accept approval for the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Bush, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Falling Waters Industrial Center. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving into our preliminary final plat approvals.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. Project lands of Al Harmous Development filed 2406-163. The developer is Al Harmous Development Group. Surveyor or engineering firm is JHA Companies. It's located in the Opecan District, Map 13, Parcel 3. This site is located at 630 Foreman Road East, off Cedar Lane, approximately one and a half miles south of the Cedar Lane and Scrabble Road, excuse me, Scrabble Road intersection. The project proposes the creation of one 3.80-acre residential lot and a 199.63-acre residue to be served by well and septic. At the May 20th, 20, excuse me, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance 2009, requiring frontage, frontage on a West Virginia DOH road to process as a preliminary final plat. Contingent on the following impervious coverage on Lot 1 will be incorporated into the overall stormwater management design for Shepherdstown Landing. On August 9, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Chris Waddell, JHA Companies.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Waddell or of the staff?
Hearing no, Madam President, I make a motion to approve the preliminary final plat.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Ms. Norton, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
The next preliminary final plat approval is Jordan and Litten.
Yes. Request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Jordan and Lit, Lit, Litten, excuse me. Jordan and Litten. The file number is 2406-170. The developer is Eve Jordan and Wayne Lit, Litten. The developer is Eve Jordan and Wayne Lit, Litten. The surveyor or engineering firm is Alpha Associates Incorporated. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 14, parcel 3. The project is located at the intersection of Giles Mill Road and Cheshire Road. The developer proposes the creation of a 57.54-acre residential lot, lot A, and a 75 and 1/4-acre lot, lot B, to be served by public water and sewer. On August 9, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. This project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
David Costello with Alpha Associates.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Costello or of the staff?
Are no questions. I make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plat for Jordan and Litten.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next preliminary final is Gent Kreitz.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Gent Kreitz. The file number is 2406-169. The developer is James Kreitz. The surveyor or engineering firm is Alpha Associates Incorporated. It's located in the Opecan District, map 8, parcel 7.1. This project is located at 218 and 258 Jacobs Road, approximately a quarter mile north of Myers Bridge Road. The developer proposes the creation of a two-acre residential lot, lot 1, and a 3.8-acre residue to be served by well and septic. On August 9, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. This project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance, and therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone to represent Gent Kreitz?
David Costello with Alpha Associates.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Costello or the staff?
Here now, Madam President, I make a motion to approve the preliminary final.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plat for James Kreitz.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very much.
The last preliminary final plat is Hensel Heights.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Hensel Heights, lot, lot 4. The file number is 2407, excuse me, dash 211. The developer is Patricia Sarah Timbrook. The surveyor or engineering firm is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map 17, parcel 97. The project is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Anderson Road and Powell Lane in the Hensel Heights subdivision. The developer is proposing the creation of lot 4A, lot 4B, and lot 4, to be served by public water and sewer. At the July 15, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance 2009, requiring a two-acre minimum lot size and frontage on a West Virginia DOH road in order to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. On August 12, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. This project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the project.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff?
Mr. Sianovich, last meeting, there were some neighbor concerns about stormwater management. Any more information that has come up with, you know, the siting process?
No, other than we simply did what I explained during that waiver discussion. We incorporated the grading design of the dwellings into the plat. We show that the dwellings are elevated, have proper drainage around them. Graded in a manner to kind of encourage sheet flow to a, you know, encourage sheet flow and not necessarily have concentrated flows. I'm really not sure what else I can add, other than what I stated during the waiver discussion. The plat is representative of what I stated at that meeting.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Additional questions? If not, ready for a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve preliminary final plat.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plat for Hensel Heights, lot 4.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, final plat determination, Red Hill.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Red Hill, phase 13, lots 236 through 237, 247 through 277, and 311 through 332. The file number is 2406-177. The developer is Phil Cogar Investments. Surveyor is Robert Land Surveying. It's located in the Hedgesville District, map 28, parcel 46. The project is located on Ridge Road South, approximately a half a mile from its intersection with Hedgesville Road. The final plat proposes the development of 55 single-family lots on approximately 21.60 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested for this phase. On August 19, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September 16, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Robert Land Surveying.
Yes. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. White?
There are no questions. I make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination, determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September 16, 2024 Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing on September 16, 2024, at which time the final plat could be approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your patience. Okay. Staff counsel, discussion, action, and motion. Little Georgetown Estates.
Yes, so this is the waiver that was tabled last meeting. So I'll just go through, read the staff report, and then I do believe Doug has something that he either handed out already or will. So this is a request for waiver. The project is Little Georgetown Estates Common Area 1, file 2406-179. The developer is Harbaugh Properties LLC, and the engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 5, parcel 6.1, and is located at the end of Status Drive, which is off of Coontown Road within the Little Georgetown Estates subdivision. The developers proposing the creation of a 3.94-acre common area, common area parcel and 58-acre residue parcel. The common area parcel will encompass the existing stormwater management facility. The developers requesting a waiver to section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance, requiring WV DOH road frontage in order to proceed through the preliminary final process. The proposed preliminary final plat will create a common area to convey to the Little Georgetown Estates Homeowners Association. The developer would still be responsible for discussing the acceptance of the common area with the HOA. There are no concerns with the proposed plat. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the waiver to section 305.4.1.
And this was tabled at the last meeting, so I need a motion to untable.
Motion to untable.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Lewis to untable, second by Mr. Bush. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the project is untabled. Do we have anyone to represent Little Georgetown Estates? A little slow getting up there, aren't you?
It was the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it's H64 is catching up with me, Madam President. Kenneth Barton, the law firm of Steptown Johnson, on behalf of Harbaugh Properties.
Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates, representing Fox and Associates, the subdivider or the proposed subdivider property.
Okay. I know what you're talking about, Mr. Barton. It gets worse. I didn't tell you that. Okay, this was quite a lengthy discussion, public hearing at the last meeting. Mr. Smith has given us quite a lengthy discussion and synopsis of what he found. Do you have a copy? Barton, excuse me? Well, yeah, but I want Mr. Barton to have a copy of it. Did you get a copy of it? This says extra. Okay, now there was also something in our packet from Ron and Nelson. Is that talking about Little Georgetown?
From what?
Oh, okay. So that has nothing to do with Little Georgetown. Excuse me? Right, okay, so are those people here this evening?
No.
Yeah, there's, there's a memo here from Ron and Nelson. Got you? Okay. Mr. Smith, do you want to take the?
Yes, ma'am. We went back and, I went back and I reviewed the file. This goes back to 2006. This is the original section 1, okay? And what I tried to do here was list some of the facts that would be relevant to. Yeah, that, that's, where is section 1? It's right here. Okay. No, I'm, I'm fine. All right, back to where I was. I went back to 2006 and brought this forward, and I just wanted to put out a few relevant facts here. I'm just going to kind of summarize these, you folks can read. What I would like to say is that both section 1 and section 2, which isn't built at this time, were designed at that time to the Maryland Department of Environmental Stormwater Management Design Guidelines. That means that this project had quantity and water quality in it, .9 inches of water quality. That water quality was part of the swales that are out there in the roadside ditches, as well as the stormwater management pond. When they drilled this site, they did 23 boreings in 2007. All 23 boreings were dry, except for three, and of those three, the groundwater was 30 feet or more below grade. I also would like to point out that this site is underlaid by karst. There were three or four major sinkholes that they remediated. There are two artesian or springs out there that are probably being fed by the Funkstown Formation. One of the sinkholes was a very large sinkhole, very large, that is just north of the stormwater management facility, and they remediated that and closed that. They also remediated a couple other within the site out there. They did use the karst reduction factors when they did their stormwater management. They are trying to infiltrate that first nine tenths of an inch, which is the requirements of MDE, which is the same requirement we have for the first inch now here in Berkeley County. The one thing that we do know is that they probably should have lined it, the facility, as opposed to unlined, especially with the proximity of the basin to a very large sinkhole, which probably is cavernous. On all the drawings, every one, sketch, preliminary, final, in section 1, section 2, and the little plan change that they wanted to do, every one of those drawings included all the soil series and listed Funkstown as having a water table two to four feet below grade. It was on every set of drawings, plain as day, right there if you read it. We, the one thing I want to point out is, there is nothing in IRC code, International Residential Code, that I can't tell you, you can't build a basement, Mr. Whittaker. You, you can build a basement. All that IRC says is you must daylight your drainage from that basement subgrade wall. And, you know, there is nothing preventing anyone from, from building a basement, and I want to point that out. We do not have that ability to say, you cannot do that. If it's engineered correctly, it has to be accepted. And lastly, we hold a $25,000 remaining balance on the bond out there. I want to point out one thing. In 2006, in that era, we did not bond stormwater management facilities. Wasn't done. Wasn't considered a improvement. Only the roadways and the utilities. So where we are, where are we with this? If this property, if the residue was sold and the stormwater management area pond went with it, which there's no easement, there's no lot, there's no nothing, the development would lose their stormwater management facility. There is no, they have no land left to give. They would have to do some sort of, of massive underground detention facility. So it is imperative that the developer be allowed to cut this off so that the HOA has their stormwater management facility. Why it was never done during the final plat in '06, I, I have no, I have nothing for you. Could not find anything to that. Very odd. But what I will tell you is, that facility was designed for section 2, and I think what they were waiting on was, they knew they were going to open up several more acres of disturbed area out there, so they were hedging their bet. I'm not going to bother with that pond right now because I know I want to come in here and do section 2, and I don't want to have final storm, final water quality in that pond because I'm just going to have to tear it all out and redo it. I'm pretty sure that's where that went. However, back in 19, the previous county engineer did request a full as-built of that pond. When I was questioned about this bond a couple years ago, when I first started, I sent the same thing out. I sent a reminder to Mr., to our lawyer friend here, and asked him where that as-built was. It, it, we would really encourage the developer to as-built that pond and show us that it's been converted over or not converted over. But at the end of the day, the waiver should be approved because it's more important that we keep the stormwater facility for the development. That's where we are. I cannot force the developer to do any more than what we've asked, which is to give us the as-built and show us that the pond was done. It does need maintenance, that's obvious. It probably hasn't been overexcavated or cleaned out from the days being a sediment control basin.
When did this project actually start?
2006.
Do you want to make sure that Mr. Ron and Nelson get a copy of this? Because he's asking about this as well. And planning commission members, thank you, Mr. Plenary Commission members, thank you, Mr. Smith, for the diligence that you gave to review this. I appreciate that. Mr. Lewis does too.
I guess the question would be then to Mr. Barton, what are, what are the plans of Mr. Harbaugh to? After Bobby, I'm sorry, Mr. Harbaugh passed away, Mrs. Harbaugh has no intention of developing Phase Two. I was engaged to take care of preparing deeds of dedication for the road, and then when I saw the stormwater, I said, wait a minute, the stormwater's not on the final plat. So that's when I engaged Fox and Associates to help us with our preliminary final, to be able to carve that off. I know that Doug has made requests of our client, Mr. Berger, to have an as-built. You're holding a surety, and one of the things on that surety is as-bills. So they're, they can't come to you and ask for bond release until the as-bills are prepared. But they've abandoned section two, Mrs., it's going to be just farmland. It's still farmland, that's all.
But if she decided to sell it as a whole, it wouldn't prevent anybody from going in there purchasing it with the intentions of that stormwater pond, so this is the reason why it needs to be cut out. Is that a short story?
Yeah, my, and I spoke with the folks from the HOA a couple of weeks ago about this. The way I would see this is if it gets given to the HOA now, and then some other developer comes in, they can't, they might be able to make an arrangement with the HOA to make that a regional pond, but I would anticipate that a new developer would have to do its own pond somewhere. And they're, they have road access on the other side of the farm, so they wouldn't need Status Drive, which is the HOA road that goes to the public road. And there's also on the plat, there's an easement because there's a little piece to get to the pond that goes into Phase Two, so there's going to be an easement at the end of Status to let them up into the pond.
Other questions?
I just, you said you had spoke to the HOA, so a lot of those folks were here a couple of weeks ago. Was that before or after them?
After. Mr. Bales, Ron, and the other gentleman came and came to my office with their attorney, and we talked about lots of things about turning it over, and this was one of the topics. But they asked that question, how did I interpret what would happen if Phase Two ever came back online? And I shared with them what I just told Mr. Whittaker.
Any additional questions, Plenary Commission members? Well, what we have is a tabled item that we've now untabled. We still have a staff recommendation, and that is to grant the waiver to section 305.4.1.
The move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Bush, second by Ms. Norton, to accept staff recommendation that was presented at the last Plenary Commission meeting with lots of discussion. You've seen Mr. Smith's interrogation of the project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else? Let me ask this question, has anybody submitted anything under the new subdivision regulations?
Yep. Administrative plat, so the item that took place of the final. The days of seeing their final plats are in limbo.
Okay, what about waivers?
I think we have, it's been a struggle trying to figure out if people were submitting or they were real. So there's some things that are in limbo, like I'm waiting on questions. It was a new application, but it looks like it was under the old ordinance, so. Now, I've been trying to get the plat, but then that, haven't had a ton of new, brand new concept plans. Haven't had any.
Any other items of discussion? If not?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Goff to adjourn at 6:55.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?